Planning and zoning commission meeting. You can join the meeting here in person at 5555 Perimeter Drive or online via the city's website. We welcome any public participation, including public comments on cases. At this time, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Ms. Beal, would you please call Rol?
Mr. Snare.
Here.
Mr. Way.
Here.
Mr. Fishman.
Here.
Let's call.
Here.
Mr. Suplack.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to accept the documents and approve. I don't think we had any minutes, so just accept the documents into the record. Do I have a first?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Beal.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. The next item that we have on our agenda is approval of the meeting dates for 2022, 2023. Do we have those to project, or are we just going to look at what was included in our packet?
I'm sure we can pull it up real quick if that would be helpful. It's in your packet and was sent ahead of time for everybody's review. And we do our typical cross-checking of holidays and breaks and things like that to help.
The only call-out I would have from the commission, I know sometimes there are vacations around the Fourth of July. The meeting date is the Seventh of July, if I remember. Yes, Seventh of July. Are there any conflicts that anyone knows about, at least at this point in time? Understanding that the commission can entertain, you know, on a quarterly or semi-annual basis to modify dates if so needed. Seeing agreement, do I have a motion to accept the 2022, 2023 meeting dates?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Let's call.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to city council when rezoning and planning of property are under consideration. In such cases, city council receives a recommendation from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 PM. Tonight, there are two items eligible for the consent agenda. Item Two, Towns on the Parkway terraces, and Agenda Item Three, Jerome High School Classroom. Does anyone on the commission wish to have either of these pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none. At this time, we will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we need to do these separately, or can we do them together? Can we do the consent agenda as a whole?
Yeah, you can adopt the consent agenda as a whole.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Oh? Yes.
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Anyone in the audience intending to address the commission on any cases this evening, will you please stand and raise your right hand and answer in the affirmative? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission? Thank you all. All right. Skipping ahead to our new cases, we're jumping to three Metro Center at PID 273-010449, case 21-156 INF, informal review. This application is a request for an informal review and feedback for construction of two four-story multifamily buildings that accumulate cumulatively 158,000 square feet in size, consisting of 265 units, amenities spaces, and associated site improvements. The 12.75 acre site is zoned office, laboratory, and research district and planned unit development district. The site is southwest of Metro Place South, approximately 2,400 feet west of the intersection with France Road. And Mr. Ridge, welcome this evening, and I'll turn time over to you for our case presentation.
Great, thank you. So as was mentioned, this is an informal review seeking non-binding feedback on the proposal to construct two four-story, for-rent apartment buildings on a 12.75 acre site off of Metro Place South. The site is highlighted in yellow on your screen. You'll notice that the northern half is heavily wooded with sparse vegetation on the southern half. Cos Gray Creek runs along the southern property line, and I-270 is located immediately to the west. A bit of background, this site encompasses two zoning districts, so office, laboratory, and research, or OLR, as well as PUD, specifically the Waterford Village PUD. The entirety of the site is within the Dublin Corporate Area Plan as well, which calls for a mix of uses, including residential up to 30 dwelling units per acre. And additionally, it promotes walkability, increased amenities, and vibrancy outside of typical office hours. This site is identified as Site Number Seven in the D cap plan, which calls for four-to-eight story buildings, as well as higher-density multifamily and hospitality uses. A bit more background on the surrounding development. As was mentioned, the site is primarily surrounded by office buildings currently with hospitality uses further to the north. These buildings generally range from four to nine stories in height and are typically constructed of glass, stone, and concrete. Additionally, there is a significant amount of surface parking immediately adjacent to this site. Before you use the proposed site plan, so the applicant is proposing two four-story residential buildings with approximately 265 units at 21 dwelling units per acre, whereas the Dublin Corporate Area Plan recommends up to 30 dwelling units per acre. Centrally located is a courtyard with amenities, including a pool. 387 parking spaces are located on either side of these buildings, and a large open space is proposed for the southern third of the site. Additionally, access is to be retained from Metro Place South. The applicant also provided conceptual architecture for the commission's consideration this evening. You can see here, these are primarily four-story buildings with a fifth-floor amenity space on select corners. The buildings are contemporary in design, utilizing dark earth-tone colors, and you can see there are a number of balconies on each elevation. So many of those same characteristics apply here as well on the west and east elevations. And on the east elevation, the bottom graphic, you'll begin to see the first-floor amenities, which include a lobby, fitness center, and lounge space. The applicant has also provided conceptual materials for the commission's consideration. You'll see here, the primary materials proposed are a charcoal-colored fiber cement panel, as well as a Nijihah vintage wood cement panel. The Dublin Corporate Area Plan recommends the use of high-quality materials, including but not limited to brick, stone, glass material, sorry, metal, concrete, and wood as well. And then the applicant provided some images just to give the commission an idea of open space inspiration and give an idea of what the intended character of the courtyard and large open space might be. So what that staff is recommending, the Planning and Zoning Commission consider a number of questions here. Additionally, any other considerations the Planning and Zoning Commission may have. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant team is also in attendance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridge. Is the applicant here, and would you like to make a statement to the commission? Welcome. If you could please come up to the podium, turn the microphone on, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Lori Bonjourno.
If you... Thank you.
Lori Bonjourno, MA Architects, 775 Yard Street, Columbus, Ohio 43212.
Welcome. Did you have a statement that you wanted to make in addition to Mr. Ridge's presentation?
Just that the overall concept for this project is a secret garden because of the long entryway that entry drive into the site. We conceptualize it as a kind of a discovery of an oasis, a secret garden in Dublin that is connected to the leisure trails and outdoor space, making the creek a feature with different amenities around that, dog park, and pickleball courts, things like that.
Thank you, Ms. Bonjourno. All right. Turning over time to the commission members to ask questions at this time. We'll hold our deliberation on the comments and anything else we would like to make later in the meeting this evening. Does anyone have questions for either the applicant or for staff this evening? Mr. Snare?
A question probably for the applicant. There was, I was trying to determine how the public gains access to the green space. And there's, you know, the non, because I'm not an architect, this may be of note, but there's a path with sort of arrowheads at the end that, are they just sort of dead-end there? So maybe you could respond to that.
Well, there, the drive, there'll be a walk-in to that area, and I know there may be plans to connect to the trails and potentially a second phase. Which we haven't brought in front of you yet, but it's part of an overall complex.
Because that's an area that historically has not been known for its walkability. But would, there's a little dotted line, so presumably that would be how pedestrian, pedestrians could get in there, but presumably they could also drive in there, and would there be public parking in those spaces? I'm just trying to figure out the access, I guess.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Way?
Yeah, I'm just curious, the site to the south is not, are there any limitations to development of that site?
Not that I know of.
I'm just curious why you didn't use more of the site when you had it available. It's not, that's not all required green space, right?
That's where our retention is, stormwater retention, and the dog park, and the natural, we wanted to utilize the creek. And there's a power line, yes, right at the south of the parking.
But detention isn't taking up that whole green area, is that correct?
No, but a large part of it, but the power line is really the biggest issue, and it's right across the...
And you don't want it cutting through the development? Is that, is that what the concern is? Because you could, you could put units, I gotta believe that you could put some units to the south, so you, because you're, you have the ability to build over three, almost 380 units, but you're only doing 265, and I just wondered, you're leaving opportunity for densification, intensification of this site. Is there a reason for that?
I, the number of units that we wanted to develop at once is 265, and we wanted to have some outdoor space.
Mr. Way, if I may as well, there is floodplain associated with the Cos Gray Creek, so that's somewhat limiting on the south.
Was, was that information in our packet or anything?
I don't believe floodplain, like, graphic was provided.
And that was my, my first question is, I thought maybe there was some big constraint there that was holding the development back. I see there's a power line, and obviously that's a constraint, but I was, and again, Cos Gray ditch must have some kind of floodplain with it, but I can't imagine it's huge.
Yeah, it's not a significant portion of the site, but there is floodplain associated with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission at this time? Mr. Ridge, if I could have you present the talking points, so that we can go through those. Looking to the commission, is there consensus? Do we want to take these one by one, or can we conquer them in a whole, just going person by person? All right, we'll take them as a whole. Mr. Way, do you want to start us off?
Okay. So let me off, start off by saying that I totally support residential in the Metro Center area. My concern is I'm not sure this is the right place for residential at this time. It seems like it's an island. It's not connected to any other residential. In fact, if you look at the entire 270 frontage from Tuttle all the way up to Sawmill, there's no other really residential. So, you know, this part of Dublin has a very strong sense of it's either, it's commercial, hotel, office, those types of uses, and I feel that introducing this residential use is kind of out of, is not being consistent. With that being said, if there was a bigger idea about residential in Metro Center, and it fit into that bigger plan, I think I could be more supportive of it. And especially if there's a Phase Two, which we don't know about, that could also have influenced my thinking. But right now, it just seems as a residential use on this site, you know, kind of in a cul-de-sac, it's an island, it's a secret garden, it just doesn't seem to fit in. And I'm not sure that we would find an office use or a hotel use that might fill it up, but, you know, those to me are more consistent with what's going on in Metro Center right now, and especially along 270. So I guess at this point, I'm not really supportive of a residential use. And again, the language in the, in the D cap say, talk about office is really the preference, and then it mentions hotels and residential. So that's, that's where I'm kind of going with this right now. So getting into the conceptual layout, again, you just heard my question about utilization of the site and, and having the capacity for more density, and we're not, the developer's not getting there yet. And again, I believe that this is a site that can handle more intensity, and so that's a consideration. And then the other questions in terms of architectural character and massing, I guess, fall secondary in my thinking, as I don't believe this is, right now, going in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Mr. Suplack, would you like to connect?
There's nothing easy about this, this site. I applaud the effort to try and make it work, right? You're sort of tangentially attached to the, to the road and tucked back in a corner. Again, there's a lot of, there's a lot of difficulty here. That said, in large part, I agree with Mr. Way. Residential generally in this, in this vicinity is a good thing. I just worry it has to be done carefully, and I'm not sure this is yet getting there. There's a lot of nice, like, nice moves here in and of itself, to the point of even your analogy, the secret garden. I mean, I think you've achieved some version of a secret garden. Unfortunately, it's a little bit, it's a little bit sort of esoteric. It's, it's an island in and of itself, and the worrisome part is how it is or is not connecting to the rest of the fabric, I guess is, is my concern. Density and intensity could greatly impact this, would definitely affect how the site is laid out, could affect the perception of access. I worry that the public, even though we're, we're building, there's a potentially public green space back here, it is far removed from everything, it would be hard to get to, and unless we're very careful about how that access and that, you know what I mean, how that welcoming process is, is laid out. I'm not, forgive me, I don't remember what all the questions were, but I do think there's opportunity on the, you know, one of them was massing, conceptual mass scale height. I think, I think part of the intensity, density conversation would address some of that. I'd be in favor of, if this is going to be residential, is it grander in its presence in the, among the buildings that it's sitting with, right? There's also sort of the worry that, I guess I'm going to the 270 worry, and I don't mean a steel warrants thunder, because I feel like he's probably going to go there. The design has to be really mindful of that, right? We've seen lots of residential properties that get adjacent to the 270 and aren't done sensitive to that in a very appropriate way. So overall, I'm supportive of residential. I don't think the plan is, is there yet. I think adjustment in intensity and density would start to potentially open up and relax some of that, so that it became more agreeable with the context in which it sits.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Mr. Fishman?
Okay, I agree with my two colleagues. I don't think that's the, this is the proper zoning for that sitting along the highway. If you look back in the minutes, of course, this was, the intention was for corporate and, and research and laboratory, those type of places that want exposure. I took a drive today just for fun to look at apartments that do face 270 around the entire city, and, and most of them, the ones I saw, I started with at Dublin and went south and around the city, are in pretty bad, bad shape after 10 or 15 years. I think that people who have a choice where to live don't want to back up to the freeway. And, and so my other concern is the way you enter through Metro, it's the only way in, putting, I think I read the material that you're about one and a half cars per unit, and I assume that this won't be the last, if this is owned, this won't be the last units you put in there. I think you, did you mention that, that it, there's going to be more? So that's a lot of cars going in and out of that area, and I know there's going to be a traffic study and so on, so I'm not an expert on that. I'll have to wait and see on that, but I'm definitely not in favor of the use residential against the highway. I guess it's 2.5 parking spaces per unit is what it was, the intention was originally. Let's see. Oh, yeah, it, and the, of course, we're not even into the architecture of the building yet, but they look pretty commercially, they, to me, they don't look like Dublin up against the highway. There's, there's, they're clad in fiber cement board, basically, and so it does, to me, it doesn't look like Dublin. But, but I guess, I don't have to repeat what my colleague said, I don't think it's the proper use for that particular area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Snare?
I'm struck by our constant sort of dilemma dichotomy. We talk about wanting some mixed use to make things more interesting. We talk about wanting green space, and we also talk about density, and they're, at some point, become mutually exclusive. I like this project. I mean, I like residential. I think I, you know, it's been a long time, but I had several offices in Metro Center for better part of 25 years, and it was wonderful. It's a concrete jungle now, and I'd rather see residential there than another office building. I think it provides some interest in the community. We also do have residential there. It's called hotels. So not everything is an office building in Metro Center. So I like the cons, I like having residential. This is a tough, you know, it's obviously a tough parcel to develop. I think they've done a good job of trying to accommodate that with respect to how, you know, the massing, et cetera. I mean, the height matches is less than what's, you know, the Metro Five, which I had offices in, you know, seven stories and nine stories. I mean, it's gigantic. I always thought it was out of scale, even though my offices were in there. It's too, you know, I can't see the, the architectural design from these sketches. I'm not, you know, I don't have that, that sort of talent. But I would, I would support a residential use in this area, and I think that we have to come to grips with, you know, do we want a lot of open space, or do we want a lot of density in this, in this particular area?
Thank you, Mr. Snare. I'm going to tie us up this evening. I echo a lot of Mr. Suplack's sentiments, and I know it was called out that there could be a Phase Two that brings more units. I think that there's a way for us to plan this and to work together to come to something that the city and that you could be proud of. By changing things up a little bit, we've talked about the, the height of the buildings, if we were to consolidate the units into a single building, allowing for future expansion and allowing for consolidation of open space to truly make it kind of that secret garden that you're looking for. I think there's opportunity there. Holy, I could be in support of residential, but we would look at it with a critical eye, understanding that it is surrounded by Class A office, office space that we would want to retain the character of, especially considering we have kind of the long-range plan of Metro Park redevelopment, Metro Place redevelopment, as that particular area of the city is a little aged. Looking at the massing, I do think that there's opportunity there. The proposed architectural character, again, we would be pretty, pretty particular and detail-oriented when it came. The Nijihah has, has been a discussion point in the past, when it's come before the commission, but it was coming before the commission as a primary material, which is not currently allowed by code. So I would pay particular attention to that and to the direction from staff and the code as far as what already-approved primary and secondary materials are, and those sought in the like uses. So looking back to staff, is there any additional detail or direction sought from the Planning and Zoning Commission at this time?
Not necessarily, just wanting to keep in mind, as this project, should it move forward, again, all these discussions about future land use and what D cap calls for, and that site being specifically an opportunity for residential, and how to, again, look at how that gets incorporated overall, whether it's more holistically as a greater plan, grander plan, better use of that site is, is important, and that preliminary development plan would be the next step that comes before you, should they want to proceed with that. So just being mindful, and your comments are helpful to understand where you're, what you're thinking about, and appreciate those comments.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. And then looking back to the applicant, is there any clarification or additional discussion that you would seek from the Planning and Zoning Commission at this time? If you could come up and enable the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jim Russell, I'm an executive vice president of Pizzuti. I apologize for my attire, I came from another meeting in the field, and I'm with the Pizzuti Company, 629 North High Street, Columbus, 43215. Very much appreciate the comments, very constructive comments. I wanted to give you a little bit more background. Sometimes it's a little bit of a challenge at a preliminary meeting of what we can disclose, but I think it's important based on some of your comments. We agree 100% trying to build density. Most developers, most quality developers, understand the importance of density. There are some challenges, especially to the south, the creek, the power lines, some constructibility issues. But one of the main things that we've been looking at is how to better connect that area of the development around Dublin. So we are under contract for property to the south with Ashland. We haven't closed on that property. We do plan on bringing some concepts back that show connectivity, additional units, another way in and out to get back to Blazer Parkway, to really create something that, that services more of the area. You know, a couple of things to keep in mind, I've been at the Pizzuti Company's 24 years, we've owned this property longer than that, we've been trying to market it for corporate office, for any office, for many, many years in partnership with the city of Dublin. It's just been a challenge for a lot of reasons. In that timeframe, Dublin has changed, and, and what people want in their developments have changed. People want to live closer to where they work, they want to take advantage of all of the qualities. They want to take advantage of all of the qualities that the City of Dublin helped incorporate into Metro Center, makes it an area that is also welcoming to residents there, the green space, the connectivity, the paths. Make it somewhere that you can go as a respite to work, but also bring the feet on the street that you need to try to drive that mixed-use development. You're dealing in an older area of town. As you had mentioned, Metro Center is an aging park. We've built three of the buildings in there, two immediately to the east that are both four-story buildings. This kind of keeps in fitting with that height, going up to five stories, to give it a little bit of a feel so it fits. But the idea of creating that mix, that niche, to be able to give you an alternative to Bridge Park and a place where folks may not want to live in that much of a hustle and bustle, but still want to live in an area that's close to work and open space. And so we're, we're really looking forward, and it's taken a while to get that other property under control, but to be able to bring something that, that fits in the neighborhood and some of that materiality will have to come out because it's still an office park. But how do we soften some of that and keep the tradition of open space, green space, connectivity, taking advantage of some of the high views? Quite frankly, even though there's a highway there, you're going to be looking over that to treetops, so we've kind of checked a lot of that stuff. So I think we're excited about the opportunity to work with you and probably very excited about the opportunity that there's actually something that can happen there because, you know, vacant property doesn't help either of us, especially ones that have been there many, many years. So we, again, appreciate the comments. We wanted to give you that insight. We agree there's that next step. And I think we're excited about what it can bring because it won't be just one island. It'll be a secret garden that has access, better access to that public green space, better connectivity to both of those parks, which, again, help that circulation. So we're, we're looking forward to the next steps of this and advancing it and working with staff on some, some new ideas and ways to incorporate some of these comments into it.
Thank you, sir.
Hopefully that helps.
Thank you. That, that does help, and we appreciate your time this evening.
Yes, no problem.
Was there any other clarification that you sought from the commission? Or did you hear what you needed to hear at this stage in the process?
Yes.
Understood. Well, thank you. Anything else from the commission? Mr. Wei.
I just wanted to raise one other thing that I believe the city vision plan, which is 20, what's the year? 20, okay, is really looking at some options for Metro Center that look at mixed use. And it would really be nice to consider that thinking, because that's kind of future thinking, and how that ties into us thinking about Metro Center.
Certainly, certainly. All right. As we've been discussing, has any additional, any at all public comment come in?
Not for this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, thank you for your time this evening. We certainly hope to see you back and watch this project progress. And hopefully, we can see it as that secret garden also. And, and thank you for your time. All right. We are moving on to case four and five, which will be heard together this evening. Ayershire Farms at PID 274-012321, I think I read that correctly, 21-114 FDP Final Development Plan. This application is a request for development of a 30-lot, single-family subdivision with 2.43 acres of open space and associated site improvements. The 11.37-acre site is Zone Plan Unit Development District, Ayershire Farms, and is located southeast of the intersection of Shire Rings Road with Cos Gray Road. Case five, Ayershire Farms at PID 274-012321, 21-115 FP Final Plat. This application, let me make sure I am on the right. Okay. Well, it looks like you're not Taylor. Yes, you're Taylor. It's been a long time since we've seen you. Mr. Mullenax, I don't know that I've ever called you by your last name.
Yeah, this is Zach. So we're on cases four and five here. Yeah.
Yeah. So do we know Taylor? You're Taylor.
She's one of our newer planners. Yes, her case was one of the consent cases, so.
Got it.
Yeah, so we're only on four and five at the end.
Fantastic. I'm getting all confused. So Zach, I know your last name, and you totally threw me for a loop there. Mr. Hounshell.
I'm just going to use the test, so.
Well, and, and we're printed on both sides, and it was stapled, and so I'm dealing with the shuffle up here. So thank you for your patience, and thank you for keeping me on my toes. And I will turn time over to you for our case presentation.
You're welcome. That's why I'm here. Well, good evening. Before you tonight is a request for two applications for Ayershire Farms. These applications would be the final development plan and the final plat. So this has been before the commission in the past for informal review and rezoning with the preliminary development plan and preliminary plat. This is the final step in the PUD process, being the final development plan and final plat. Council did approve the rezoning and the accompanying preliminary applications back in March of 2021. So the final development plan is an opportunity for the commission to review what has been submitted and make sure that it's compliant with the approved preliminary development plan, as well as the preliminary development text. So the site is highlighted in yellow on your screen. This is an 11.33-acre site and is zoned PUD as the rezoning has been approved. The site is located at the southeast corner of Shire Rings Road and Cos Gray Road and is currently vacant. So a brief overview of what we'll be discussing with this presentation tonight, splitting into three categories, the first being the final development plan, the second being minor text modifications to the approved development text, and the final plat. The final development plan will require a determination tonight with the final plat being a recommendation to City Council for a resolution. There are a number of minor text modifications being proposed tonight. These text modifications are a result of not significantly altering the intent of the preliminary development plan or rezoning, but rather providing necessary clarifications to address any unforeseen circumstances and unclear information provided in the development text. So in March of 2021, City Council did approve a rezoning preliminary development plan and preliminary plat for the site. The site at the time was 11.37 acres in size, and Council did approve 30 single-family lots, three public streets, and approximately 2.63 acres of open space split between three reserves. The site plan that's shown on the screen is what was submitted to City Council and represents the preliminary development plan. Council did approve the application, but did require a number of updates to the text as well as the plans. Some of these updates included how the management of stormwater basins would be managed between the HOA and the city. Material updates in the development text, one of which would be removing brick from the permanent materials for the chimneys, as well as the homes. And then updates to locations of air-conditioned units for some of the lots, as well as the rear stoops and what those materials would be. Additionally, the applicant provided a garage door calculations exhibit. So this was to further explain how garage doors were calculated on each of these front facades for the models of homes that are being proposed with this development, and a patio area exhibit. And this was to show how much developable area was located to the rear, the footprints of the homes that would fit on these lots, and I'll share that in the presentation later. Finally, the applicant did remove fencing as permitted within the development, so it is prohibited as stated in the development text. And there are provisions that do allow fencing in some cases per the zoning code, specifically for pool barriers. So in those cases, it would still be permitted. So shown is the proposed final development plan. The site plan shown is the updated site plan. You'll see that there are very little differences between the preliminary and what is proposed tonight. So this site is 11.33 acres in size to date, and you'll notice some of these items are highlighted in, not highlighted, but they are italicized. Anything that is italicized are areas where minor text modifications are requested. So 11.33 acres in size is a minor text modification, and I'll explain that after this. Additionally, there are 30 single-family lots, as originally proposed, with the three public streets. And this does equal a new dwelling units per acre of 2.65 for density. Additionally, there is approximately 2.39 acres of open space split between the three reserves, which are highlighted on the screen. Reserve A is the highlighted red area, the blue is Reserve B, and the yellow is Reserve C. The acreage density and reserve sizes are all results of additional right-of-way dedication, which is required along Shire Rings Road. So this is not the fault of anything changing with the proposed site plan. The lots do not change, the open spaces do not change. This is solely for the acquiring of additional right-of-way along Shire Rings Road. Additionally, there are text modifications requested to the front building line, nomenclature, and the architectural elements. The front building line nomenclature was added in place of a front yard building setback to remain consistent with the definitions in the Dublin zoning code. Additionally, a text modification was provided to change the minimum lot width calculation from calculating at the right-of-way line to the front building line, which also, which allows previously approved lots to come into compliance with the text, as well as remain consistent with how lot width is defined in the zoning code. The architectural elements was an item that was required to be provided with the final development plan. The applicant has indicated that windows, shutters, and louvers would qualify for these items. Architectural elements are additional requirements for specific lots 1, 22, 23, 26, 27, 30, as these are open and exposed, lots that have a little bit more prominence as you are coming into the development and seeing the development from the outside. So shown on the screen is the conceptual home layout. This was a sheet that was requested by City Council and has been included with the final development plan. Shown, you'll see each lot has its own specific building footprint. Each lot will be programmed with building footprints that differ from adjacent lots, as well as meeting the required setbacks. You'll see to the rear of each home, there is an area that is a lighter green than the general green. That light green area is the additional developable area to the rear of each home. So this is where rear amenity spaces would be permitted to be located. Lots 23 through 30 do have their own specific requirements listed in the development text. The developer is responsible for developing patios with these spaces, or with these lots, with the development of the homes. This provision was added to minimize future appearance requests for rear amenity spaces that encroach into the rear or side yard setbacks throughout the development, so making sure that future developments don't have issues with BZA moving forward. Shown on the screen, talking through the tree survey, as well as landscaping and open space. So the applicant did provide a complete tree survey with the submittal specifying what's staying on the site and what's being removed. The applicant will be removing 942 caliper inches of trees and replacing 613 caliper inches of trees. This does leave 329 caliper inches, which need to be paid for in lieu of replacement. However, there is a condition that staff is recommending the applicant hold half of these trees, not being replaced on the site, to be planted during development to provide additional screening throughout the site. So what this means is that the remaining replacement trees, taking half of those caliper inches, putting them aside so that if there are gaps in the landscape plan when it comes to development, we'd be able to pull from that and replace them. So there are landscape buffers along Cos Gray Road and Shire Rings Road, as you can see on this, this site plan, as well as along the rear property lines along the perimeter of the development. This includes existing trees that will not be removed, as well as new replacement trees. Additionally, you'll see street trees, which line the three public streets, which have been approved. These street trees will, the final location of these will be determined by the city forester as we move forward with this application. Top left, you'll see a example of rubble walls. These rubble walls will be located within Reserves A and B, and will be flanked by deciduous and ornamental trees with tall grasses and perennials spread throughout the open space reserves. And just to recap, the features that you'll see in each of the reserve, Reserve A will include a retention pond with a fountain, a gazebo and picnic table, benches, a shared use path, shared use path and entry feature signage. Reserve B will include an entry feature and landscaping. And then Reserve C in the southeast corner will include a retention pond with a fountain, a concrete seating area, and benches. The proposed entry feature will be located along the entry off of Shire Rings Road to the northeast. You can see on the screen the example of what these entry features will be. It'll be a cultured stack stone with vertical stone stacking. This will be about 15 and a half feet in length with a six-foot tall pier. The east entry feature will include a five-square-foot entry feature sign, which will be constructed of stone with a stone cap. And then these will also be surrounded by additional landscaping. Finally, in the development text, the applicant does define that each lot will include a block-coach light post, as well as a porch light. Both of these will be consistent in design and be located in the same places relatively to each neighbor. And finally, the applicant is proposing a cluster mailbox that will service the entire neighborhood and will be located along the Drewmar Court, which is in the southeast corner of the site. And it would be the, the unit that is shown on the screen. This has been approved by the United States Postal Service. The other side of this is the final plat. I won't dive too much into this because we've seen everything that is consisted on here, but the applicant will need to continue to work with staff to provide additional right-of-way along Shire Rings Road in coordination with the final development plan and prior to submittal to City Council. So the applicant has requested 14 minor text modifications, which are all listed below as to where they are referenced. I do have these. So if anyone has a question about any specific one, once we get to discussion, please let me know, and I'm more than happy to bring them up. As stated, staff has found these criteria to be met, as these do not significantly alter the intent of the preliminary development plan and rezoning, but rather intended to provide additional clarifications for unforeseen circumstances from the preliminary development plan. The additional criteria for the development plan and final plat have been met, and staff is recommending approval of the 14 minor text modifications, approval of the final development plan, and approval of the final plat. With that, I am happy to answer any questions our commission may have. Otherwise, Michael King and his team are here to answer any questions as the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hounshell. All right. Any questions for staff at this time? Let's turn some time over. Welcome this evening. Is there a statement that you'd like to make to the commission before we discuss the minor modification, the text modifications that we're discussing later this evening?
Good evening, Madam Chair and commission members. My name is Mike King. I live at 5884 Dunheath Loop in Ballantre. I am the managing partner of MC Shire Rings. I have with me tonight Joel Perry from American Structure Point and Gordon Birkenfield from Pod Design. We'd like to thank you, staff, commission, and council for all their input over the last two years. We put a lot of work into this and have made a lot of changes with engineering and staff, and I think we've got a really nice product here to bring to the city of Dublin. We are proud to bring the 30-unit boutique project to my community. I live approximately a quarter mile away from this site in Ballantre. I've been watching this site for about 10 years and said I'd be really neat to put a little boutique subdivision in here. It would fit in perfect with the adjacent community, Ballantre. So we hope to receive your final approval tonight, and thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Looking to the commission for any questions for the applicant. Mr. Schneer.
I'm guessing this has been discussed before, so I apologize. The cluster mailbox, that's, what is that, Reserve C, that will serve all the other homes, correct?
Correct. It's called a CBU. The United States Postal Service is requiring the CBU units to be used on all current and future new projects, so they have one delivery point for their mail delivery.
How will, how do you foresee the residents, is the expectation that there won't be a queue? I mean, some of these, some of the homes are, you know, reasonably far from here, and on a nice day, everybody should walk, but probably in February, they won't. Do you just expect that there won't be any sort of queue? There'll be one, one car that'll double park and get their mail and just whip around there? I don't mean whip around, but just drive on, because there's like no place to, you know.
This has been an ongoing issue with all new developments throughout Ohio and the United States. The federal government is, the federal post office has decided to go to one location or several multiple locations within a community for residents to pick up their mail. Generally, we try to place them or place them in an area that's around an open space so it doesn't interfere with people parking. so it doesn't interfere with people parking in front of other residential units or headlight pollution into the home. But it's really something that's out of the control of, of, of the developer at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Schnair. Any other questions? Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Has any public comment been submitted on this item?
We did receive one public comment, which I included within your virtual or digital packet, but I will read it to you this evening, as I came in later this afternoon. So this is from Ken Porter at 7090 Larnie Drive in Dublin, 43016. We live in the last house west in Ballantrey. Tree number 7783 is on the corner of the new development in our backyard. If it had been in our yard, we would have had it removed some time ago. It is in very poor condition. We also pick up numerous branches after every storm. Also, we request that if the development is not going to get started this fall, that someone please mow or bush hog the lot, as it is a home for coyotes and other animals. We hear them just about every night. Thank you, and we look forward to new neighbors.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. Just a couple of questions from me this evening. So you called out specifically lots 23 through, through 30 as having outdoor amenity space as part of the development plan. Can you explain the reasoning?
Certainly. So lots 23 through 30 are the smallest lots. Excuse me. There are additional provisions that allow for 10 feet of encroachment into the rear yard specifically for these lots. This is a provision that, that Mike and his team had made to assure that the people that are buying these homes are aware of the space they have and to alleviate any future problems. So they would be designing these patios with the development of the home with, with the help of, of the homeowner. So the lots 1 through 22, because those have more space, the, there is a provision in the development text that requires them to provide this information of how much developable space there is to the rear of the home. So that's why there is a distinction between the two.
So I, I'm just looking at, you know, lots 1, 2, 3, and then 12 there on the south, maybe even 10. Could, could you talk through the, you know, the way that I read that is 18 and a half feet on lot 23 and 15 feet on lot 10?
Right. So I, I'll speak a little bit for Mike, and if he wants to correct me, please do. So right now, my understanding is that the footprints that are shown are most likely going to be the, the footprints that are for these lots. It should also be noted that zoning code does allow for an additional five feet for accurate patios, and this, this exhibit does not account for that. So I don't believe, I believe when I did some math with what's currently shown, none of these lots allow for anything less than about 350 square feet for patios. Obviously, the sizes are going to change, but that was the same question that we had. But yes, there, there is an additional five feet that is allowed.
Got it. One other question, well, I guess two other questions. Can you clarify your statement earlier in the plant, planning report about the removal of brick?
Yes, so this was a discussion from city council, and it did, it was a discussion regarding the materials on the homes. So they had requested that brick be removed as a permitted material, and that is, that resulted from, from discussion with council. So that is no longer material that'd be permitted here. I believe it's just stone and a number of different sightings.
And then I guess my last question would be, I realize we are at this part of the process, but I believe at this point, we would talk apparatus turnaround in those bulbs within the two tail ends. Has engineering, Mr. Hendershot, do you want to come field that one? Is there any concern for apparatus turnaround?
Hi, good evening. So we have coordinated with Washington Township Fire Department to look at that specifically. So there was an auto turn exhibit, which shows that apparatus movement, and we have no concerns with the geometry as it's proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Hendershot. All right. Any other questions from the commission? So at this time, I'll turn it over for discussion, unless we've received additional public comment in the interim. All right. Mr. Schnair, do you want to start us off?
I don't see any problems with it. I'm fine with, with the proposed changes and the staff recommendations.
Mr. Fishman.
Yeah, it's too late to change anything else, right? It's not here. I don't, I just, I don't remember, I just heard no brick. The driveways, are they going to be concrete, brick, or blacktop?
Yeah, I, I don't believe, I, I remember the discussion regarding whether they be blacktop or not. I believe it is concrete. Yeah.
They are going to be concrete?
That, that is correct. The development text states driveway shall meet all Dublin design standards and shall be constructed of concrete, stamped concrete, or pavers. Asphalt is a prohibited material.
Okay. It's asphalt is, okay, fine. I thought I'd read that. I just want to make sure that, you know, because we had discussed it, if you remember the previous meeting. Okay, I'm fine.
Mr. Suplack.
Generally, I'm on board with everything. I'm just going to channel my inner, inner Jane Fox here for a moment and advocate for the, the green spaces and the placemaking of those. I, I mean, I know you guys, how about this? These two end pieces haven't really changed over the course of all these conversations, and I know there's been conversation on the history about can they be better? Can they be better? Can they be better? I mean, that's, it's self-serving for you guys, it's self-serving for us relative to the fabric of the, the entire, entire community. I would still continue to advocate for that, that these are, they're fine, right? You guys are doing a good bit of water attention. It'll be, it'll be nice to sit and look at on occasion, but in large part, we'll all just walk by this or drive by this without, without, without sort of lingering, which means it's not really a place, right? Like, it's just, it's just a pass-by. So whatever that means to you all, there's still opportunity to, I think, make those improvements, be it a thing that, an activity embedded in one of them, that a fire pit or a bocce ball court or those types of things, or, you know, I'm, I'm not advocating for anything in particular as much as just, you know, I mean, there's, there's more that could be done there. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Mr. Way.
Thank you. This is my first time seeing this, so it's very interesting to look at the amount of attention and detail that went into this, the time that went into it. I'm, I, I was very pleased with what I saw when I opened my package, and it, it really shows the, the great work of the city and the developer of working together to come up with a plan that everybody can be happy with. So it's really hard to kind of find anything at fault with it. To respond to Mr. Suplack's comment, you know, this is a part of Dublin where placemaking's a little bit tough anyway, because it's more of a, kind of a vehicular place. But I think there's plenty of opportunity for the community and the HOA to build something around that little pavilion that would create place for that community. And I think, to me, there's, the opportunity is there. So I think it's, it's a good project.
Thank you, Mr. Way. My only comments are to echo those of the council members, and then just, I, I know this has been a process. Some of the things that we've addressed before are, I think it's lot 10, that's the dead straight lot there. Be mindful of headlights and, you know, all the things that have come up in the prior iterations, the prior discussions. Overall, I think this is a great project, and we certainly welcome it. And it's wonderful to hear neighbors' comments about, we're looking forward to new neighbors. We don't always get comments like that from adjacent property owners, so it is refreshing and very, very nice to hear those type of comments. It's also indicative of the quality of the project that you brought forward, so thank you very much. At this time, is there any additional clarification you would like? Then I believe, based on what I heard from the commission, we are ready to move forward with a motion. I am going to do these serially. So the first one is to approve 14 text modifications. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Schnair?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
This call.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Beal. The second one, could I have you, you're steps ahead of me. Fantastic. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the four conditions on the final development plan, as shown on your screen and included in your packet? Seeing head nods, I will entertain a motion to approve the final development plan with four conditions.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
This call.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnair?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Thank you, Mr. Hounshell. The final motion is to approve the final plat with two conditions, as displayed on the screen. Assuming the same that the commission has been able to review these, I will entertain a motion to approve the final plat with two conditions.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Schnair?
Yes.
Mr. Way?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
This call?
Yes.
Mr. Suplack?
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time this evening. We certainly look forward to seeing you and seeing the project develop. I think we're in record time, ladies and gentlemen. Next, we have communications. The, the next meeting, December the 8th, which is a Wednesday, so just to call out there. I know.
We're trying to confuse you here at the end of the year, every day.
Boxing.
Rebecca can't read an agenda, you know, we're just keeping people on our toes.
I know, I know. We need Nikki to come back, is really what it boils down to.
All right. Is there any further communications that staff has for the commission?
No, I think we're, that's great. Thank you so much.
All right. Any communication from the commission to staff? Happy holiday.
Yeah, thank you, you too.
So we certainly hope that you all get some very well-deserved time off, and thank you very much for your dedication. It's that time of year where we're reminded to do what we should do all the time, which is be thankful to those around us. So thank you again for everything that you do. It is certainly not unappreciated. We, we love spending our time with you, and you make it fun, so thank you.
I second that motion.
I third, I thirded that.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I do believe this is one of, this is this commission's record right here. So I think we were efficient, we were to the point, we didn't cut any corners, and we did our job. So thank you very much for being part of it, and I will adjourn the meeting. Oh, no. My goal is to never-